All right. Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, November 16th. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Oh, whoa. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. We'll move into citizens' comments, or citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? There's nobody in attendance. Do we have anybody online?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you, Steve. We'll move on then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve bills and vouchers?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Approval of minutes from November 2nd.
Move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. We'll move into our 8:35 item, COVID-19 update. With us again this morning Director, Public Health Director Kathy McKay and Nursing Director Jamie Henon. Good morning.
Here and commissioners.
Oh, Becky, sorry.
Hmm?
No, Becky, sorry.
Oh, I noticed that.
Yeah, she had a conflict for today. There we go.
It's just nice when she can be here to, in case there's questions regarding.
Absolutely.
Epidemiologist's opinion.
That's right. Okay, I'll start it off with our active cases, and as you can see, they're still a trend upward in Clay County. We're at 562 now from last week of 505, and then across the state of Minnesota, the 25, 387 to now 33,308. So we're not seeing the trending down yet. Cass County also did see an increase in their active cases at 740 this week, and cases across the state in North Dakota are not trending down much, but a little bit decreased on November 15, 3006. And then we look at our Clay County active cases by age, and you can see the, the distribution of the active cases, still high numbers in the five to nine-year group. That's the, that's the highest we're seeing now, and also elevated numbers in the 40 to 44 age group at this point. And cases, the cumulative cases by age, and so our total cases are 11,449 for our entire pandemic, so. And you're, again, you're seeing the, this, this is cumulative, so the 20 to 24 cumulatively are the highest group. And these are the Clay County cases per week, so from July of this year to current. So we're seeing the upward trend that started around in August, and then you can see the, the shaded gray last line is preliminary, of course. There's 281 cases so far that were reported. So the 388 has been the highest number for this fourth wave that we reported the end of October. And this is the overview of the cases per week, starting at March of 2020. So we've seen then the spike again over the past couple of weeks. And this is highest since we've seen the spike in November of 2020. So the gray shaded bar at the end, of course, is a preliminary number. When the data catches up, we'll see a, a different number on that end. So there's no indication that we've, we've reached a peak yet. It's, this wave, as we talked about before, this fourth wave seems to be much longer than typical waves have been, so we're still not seeing the, the decline of cases that we normally would, would see.
Kathy, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How long does the, how long does somebody stay on the active case list? So in other words, if, you know, you can, you can test positive for quite some time after, after you actually, you know, get the virus, but you know, how, how long do they stay, how long do they stay on our active list?
Well, they're, they're, they're considered an active case until they complete their isolation process. So the active case and the isolation is 10 days. So once they complete that 10-day process, then they're not considered active anymore.
So when we look at this and we see November 15, 562, and November 8, there was 505, is the difference, the new cases? Or is it not necessarily the new cases?
Are, are you looking at the?
I'm looking at your, at your very front page.
Oh, the front page. Oh, okay. So yeah, the number of active cases, yeah, within a week. Right. There would still be, I mean, some of those cases would still be on the active list, but those would be new cases. She's, so she's looking at the numbers of November 8. That's the number we have registered in the data, and sometimes it's slow to catch up, so it's, it's as accurate as you get from the day she's looking at it. But she's also looking at it November 15. There's 562 cases. So your question is, how many of those 505, if I'm understanding that correct?
Well, I, I guess, I guess another way to look at this is, is how many new active cases do we see on a weekly basis versus, you know, because somebody can stay active, I think you could probably stay active for, what, two weeks maybe? I mean, quarantine period can be 14 days.
Quarantine is if, if they've just been exposed, but isolation is 10 days?
Isolation is.
Yep.
Okay, so they can be on for 10 days then?
Correct. Yeah.
So that's considered the infectious time, but we do actually say if you saw the fever, stay home, but it is that 10-day window that they're, you know, that they're going into the data basically for that 10 days.
Okay, so the active cases is based on, they're, they're gonna, once they hit that, they're there for 10 days?
Right. Yes.
Okay, and then we're looking at this, this is the CDC level of community transmission, so we, we showed this the last couple of weeks. There's just one county that's in the substantial level. Otherwise, all of Minnesota is in that high transmission rate still. And these are cases from November 7 through the 13th, so this is showing that trend of cases. And then the total number of deaths, we're at 100. That changed last week as well, so no new reported deaths, and that's throughout the pandemic. And this is Clay County Hospital admissions per week, so it's the number of COVID hospital admissions per week for Clay County residents. So that's what this is showing. So the week of 10/31, there were 14 new admissions to the hospital and eight reported so far for last week. So those were new admissions. And we haven't seen that number, as you can see from the graph too, since October, or November, I'm sorry, November 2020. So the number of hospitalizations have been higher than, or the 17th, I think of, if I'm reading that right, 29th of November, we had 17, but then the numbers dropped down for quite a while. Now we're back up to 14.
Is admission somebody who is overnight, at least one night overnight?
Correct. Yes, yes. That's correct. Those don't count any emergency department, you know, visits. Those would be if they've been admitted into the hospital. You are correct. And the Clay County Hospital admissions by age groups, you see the 65, 42% are the 65-plus, and the 0 to 64, 58% of, of those admissions. So it breaks down the admissions by age, residents by age. So the, again, the majority is the 0 to 64, the majority of the percent of admissions. So total of 103 cases admitted to the hospital as of August 1st. And then I'll let Jamie continue.
Okay, so the hospital capacity in the Fargo area, Essentia in Fargo had two staffed ICU beds and, for adults, and then zero pediatric ICU beds. And then Sanford had four adult ICU beds and one pediatric ICU bed. And then statewide, the total ICU beds for adults is 15, and only one ICU bed for a pediatric, and that one is in Fargo as well. And I know we've talked a lot about hospital, you know, capacity, and one of the things that we've discussed is the fact that there is a very wide area that transports clients to the Fargo area, so that impacts our hospitals in the Fargo area as well. I live, you know, an hour north of here, and our little hospital transports to the Fargo area on the Minnesota side, so it's a pretty wide service area for them. And then looking at the next slide, the North Dakota hospital data. This slide shows the statewide hospital data for North Dakota. There are currently 163 hospitalized due to COVID and 16 in the ICU. Compared to last week, there were 148 in the ICU, in, in the hospital and 16 in the ICU. And then the middle chart shows the current hospitalizations broken down by age group. Currently, there are four pediatric admissions, and the chart on the right shows the age group by total admissions through the pandemic, so that's cumulative as well. And then the next slide is the, the Sanford, so the, the 22 Sanford Health-owned hospitals. And again, the point of this slide is just to really show that it is primarily the unvaccinated that are in the hospital, in the ICU and on ventilators. And so you'll see the numbers there for each of them, but the majority of the hospitalized cases continue to be for the unvaccinated. And then this slide shows the breakthrough cases that are, those that are fully vaccinated for the last 14 days or more, and then develop and test positive for, for COVID. Breakthrough, breakthrough cases in Minnesota, 2.245%. Breakthrough hospitalizations, 0.098%, and breakthrough deaths, 0.016%. The takeaway for this is over 3 million Minnesotans are fully vaccinated and will continue to see strong protection from severe illness and death. And then we have the statewide vaccine data for ages five and up through November 11th of this year. And so the people with at least one dose of vaccine, we are at, basically 3.5 million Minnesotans have had at least one dose, so 67.7% of those that are eligible in that five and up. And then those who've completed the series, we are at 63.3%, and again, that's for those that are five and up that are eligible. And then you'll see the breakdown there. There has been a pretty good response to that five-through-11 age group. Those that were ready, were looking for a place to get a vaccine very quickly, and were vaccinating their children. We have a clinic ourselves this week, but the, the response for those appointments is not very high, so I think they got out and got them when they can. But these are basically those that are continuing to be vaccinated in this age group in that breakdown. The next one.
Jamie, do we have, we have, didn't we used to see how Clay County compares to the state?
We did, and we stopped doing that because we felt like the data was just not real accurate because of the North Dakota and how things are coming. Still, people are telling us, I got my vaccine, I think.
Yeah, so when, when some people might say, well, Clay County isn't doing as well as the rest of the state, there's the, the data that we have can be misleading, right?
Right. The Minnesota COVID side, if you go to that, you can manipulate that. You can choose the state, the county, you can change the age group, you know, you can do a lot with the data on there. And it does show Clay County as that we were lagging, but that's why we just, it's not accurate. We keep bringing, you know, we were bringing, and it's really not true because we know that people are being vaccinated on the North Dakota side, and it's not getting over. So.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So then we'll look at the Clay County doses administered by public health, 16,812. We had two clinics last week. Both of them were over the lunch hour and then till 6 o'clock at night, just to cover, you know, to make it as, as possible for people to get in. We did have less of a response than we did the last week, so 273 people were vaccinated on those two days from 11:30 through 6:00. And so we already saw a reduction. Again, I just want to point out that there are so many opportunities for vaccine in the community, and I think that's really what it's about. It's not about access because we are being as accessible as we can. We serve those that are coming in and saying they would like a vaccine, but, but, you know, we're doing what we can, basically, to serve them. So this week, what we're planning is we did receive our, our Pfizer vaccine for the children five through the age of 11, so we have a clinic tomorrow. That clinic is from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock, thinking we can get kids after school and, and into the evening. We didn't have a lot of people signed up yesterday, so again, we're pushing it out to the media like we have been, and the schools.
And where, the location for that is?
The Family Service Center, in the ITV room. And then on Thursday, we're having a clinic from 11:30 to 5:30, and that will be for anyone 18 and over that would like a, a booster. So we'll have Moderna, J&amp;J, and we're also offering first and second doses for anyone who's eligible for that as well, so. So, yeah, I guess that's, we continue to use our COVID vaccinators as much as we, we are able, and providing as many opportunities as we can.
With the increased number of, of cases, how is your, how is your staff holding up in terms of the?
The case investigation?
Yes, yes, that's what it is.
They, they are very busy. We do have quite a few people that we brought on within like the last couple of months, and so they're busy, very busy. And Becky leads that team, so she's very busy as well, but it's, it's, it's important. We get a lot of phone calls. If they're tested on the North Dakota, they still call to find out what the guidelines are on the Minnesota call, so if we don't call them, they call us, so it's important.
Anything else, Jamie? Kathy, anything else? Any questions for?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Okay, we'll be back.
That was your hint. All right, our next item is request to hire a diversity equity and inclusion navigator for 2022, and we have Darren and Kathy and Steve. And I don't know if, Steve, did you want to set the table on this one, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These two items are, to a certain point, kind of interconnected. Both of these items came out of our, our Clay County American Rescue Committee as recommendations to bring forward. Part, part of what we're looking at today is, when we, when we look at the ARPA funding availability, we know that, we know that through, through the pandemic, that there's been a group of, of people that have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. We've seen that through avenues of communication. It's also through the impacts of loss of jobs that impacts all parts of their life. And so this morning, we have two different items that we're bringing forward that we think will have a positive impact on, on those different members of ethnic communities today and also moving forward. And so the first item is Kathy, and I'm going to turn that over to Kathy.
Okay, thank you. We did request a variable hour person that we could use. It, it just seemed like variable hour makes sense. We, Rory Beal from my team has a lot of connections with all of the organizations in the community, works real directly with many of them throughout COVID and in health promotion areas as well. So we felt like if we had an individual that could work variable hour and could connect, Rory could connect them to the organizations, and we would hire someone that is, is kind of a leader in one of those organizations, or an informal leader, that can communicate our, our message about getting the vaccine, providing accurate information on, on COVID virus itself, and then Rory wanted to intertwine some activities, the mental health activities we have, suicide prevention, youth tobacco use. He's already utilized some, a couple of individuals from some of those organizations when they did the tobacco use, substance use work. So they've been involved in some of the health promotion activities. So variable hour at this point in time, because it'll be really through 2022. We don't know what that'll look like as far as ongoing vaccinations, but we've met some of the needs, as we've been told from some informal leaders. We've met some of the needs of the diverse populations, but we really want to make sure we hit any other pockets of people that we may not have reached. So with Rory leading this position, I think we'll be very effective with a variable hour position person that can help us reach all of those communities and organizations and, and any, any needs that have not been met yet.
All right. We certainly have had numerous discussions about this within our ARPA committee, Cares Committee. This comes out of that committee with a recommendation to hire. I think, you know, we, we did, we did receive and have some presentations from members of these different groups, sharing some concerns about, you know, the education process, especially when it comes to COVID and vaccines and those issues, and they felt it would be helpful. This might be taking a little bit different route than, than what, what had been suggested, but I think to, to make sure that we include everybody involved with this, this, this item and the next item, I think between the two of them can go a long way in helping an awful lot of issues that, that, not only COVID, but other things can also come into play with, with some of our new Americans and, and and other ethnic groups that are, that are involved. So certainly, I, I think this is a good, a good hire to do so. Mr. Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is exciting. I think that the Cares Committee and ARPA Committee throughout the last two rounds of, of funds that we had wanted to make sure that we addressed disparate, disparities or gaps in services, but certainly making sure that all of our citizens had access to important pieces of information. And, and what has come out of that is we've heard a little bit that there are gaps, and I think creating the, this position and potentially the next position will allow us to have a go-to person for connections. And I think it's all really about connections, making sure we're connecting the right people with the right information, be it translation services, which we'd heard about concerns during the last go-around, or culturally specific information in terms of the public health information and clear information on, on vaccines. And I think this is really the result of a lot of teamwork from the county, but I really do want to shout out to the Afro-American Development Organization and our Kurdish-American Development Organization. They really did advocate well for their groups, but not only their groups, really all of the groups within Clay County that may, for whatever reason, feel like there's a disconnect. And so we really need to make sure that we are, we're making a point to speak clearly by, by saying we heard you, but also that we are committed to continuing the dialogue past COVID. These issues have come up because of COVID, and I think that maybe it's one thing that's a positive, that we did hear that there's a disconnect, and we are affirming going forward with better relations. So I think that I'm really excited about the possibility for this. I think that this, you're seeing in a lot of organizations, diversity and equity coordinators, and I think it's just to bolster existing infrastructure. It's really a positive move, so I certainly am excited about it.
Any other, yes. Commissioner Kaylee.
I too am very excited about this. I think it's really important to get medical information from somebody that you identify with, somebody that looks like you and that you feel that you can trust. And it's really important that we have that person on our staff to show that, yes, this is important to us as a county, so I'm excited to support this. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up to those comments, you know, I think there, there had been some requests, and I, and I want to echo Commissioner Mojo's comments regarding the presentations by the Afro-Americans and the Kurdish communities. On behalf of all of the other communities throughout Clay County, they did a tremendous job in expressing the need, and we're here today recognizing that need and wanting to support that need to move forward. So, you know, but the, the important thing that, that we felt right now, that, that if we want to have that good correlation that's there, I agree with you, Commissioner Kaylee, that, that we need to have that person be on staff as a Clay, as a Clay, Clay County person to kind of help with that. And we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit more about the, this role right now. This one deals directly with, with Kathy's Department and public health issues. This is going to go much further beyond that in terms of, of working with all of our diverse communities that we have. So, yeah, so, yeah, those are good comments, and, and the recommendation on both of these from the ARPA Committee was that, that these people be on staff. So Commissioner Ebinger.
And this may be in the, in the words here in the presentation, but the former Department Administrator in me is wondering what, how these two positions that are, have a different chain of command, have a similar mission, how are we going to coordinate this? Is one going to answer to the other? Is this going to be coordinated through your office, Steve? How do we, we have two positions here for this, so I just want to see how we, we make sure they're effectively administered, and also what the hiring process or the qualifications would be.
I'll maybe speak a little bit to the PDQs and then throw it to Darren for the hiring process. We have developed two different PDQs, and throughout this process of evaluating how COVID affected all of us in different communities with that, have, have realized that, that it, this position would be hard to address all of the needs brought out by only one person. Specifically Kathy's issue. I think there, as we know, are substantial amounts of work that they're doing, and in regards to public health and education and vaccine and the rollout, it just is so much that felt that that really was best under the community. What are we, what's the new name for it?
Navigator.
Navigator. So that's where we felt it, it best would lie. There are existing issues that have been maybe made worse because of COVID in terms of getting information to different, the different groups, and so that's where we felt like that second piece would best be under the Central Administration and would report to our administrator, and really would be more issues brought out because of COVID. Oh, now our government center, not everything is located at the courthouse anymore. It's, have we done a great, a good job of communicating that? And there's, you know, housing issues that have been brought out because of it, and, and maybe working, maybe that's connecting it to community action in terms of their, their assistance for weatherization. So I, I think there's just so many other issues that have been brought out because of COVID. It wouldn't be appropriate for that to only be with that navigator that Rory and Kathy would oversee. And that's kind of why we developed maybe the more, the two separate ones.
And I think, well, I think just before we go to Darren, I think just another thing on that too to keep in mind here is the recommendation that we're doing here on both of these positions is that their ARPA funds that would, they would be used for, for the first year. And of course, the ARPA funds that we have, you can actually. And of course, the ARPA funds that we have, you can actually, you know, through a period of over four years, you can, you can go, you can go out there. But part of this in the, Kathy, to be honest with you, I am hoping the position that we're dealing with, with you goes away real soon. The reason I say that is because then, then we've no longer got the COVID issue because you're, that's where this one is primarily involved with was the education on, that, and that's, and that's what those communities asked for through public health was that. So, okay, Darren, do you want to talk a little bit about?
Well, you guys have summarized everything pretty much. You've taken away all my narrative on the second position, but that's okay. No, the, the second position that we're talking about is like Commissioner Mojo said, is a more holistic, overall county-wide position where this position is going to be dealing with social services, law enforcement, attorney's office, and, and maybe in the next year or two, it will be working closely with this position, but it won't be the only thing that this position is doing. And this, the, the one that we're proposing for the county is a full-time position, still paid with ARPA dollars because probably the focus is going to be COVID-type issues in the near future. But then when the COVID kind of subsides, it will have other options to go out to those diverse communities, whether it be new Americans or Native Americans or refugee communities, and try to have that as a, this position as a one point of contact for those people. Instead of sometimes going to social services, sometimes going to public health, you know, it would be an overall position that these communities could go to. And also this position then would be in close contact with the county administrator, with the county board on bringing issues that may be unique to those diverse communities so that you can make decisions on, on how to deal with some of those issues. So the, the full-time county position under the county administrators would be, you know, an overall reaching of, of all the departments. And I think going to Commissioner Ebinger's question is that this position would work just like most other positions in the county is that everybody works with everybody. The only leadership organization that that would fall under would be the county administrator, but it would still work with all the departments in areas that they need because the county provides so many services to its citizens and we want to make that as a one point of contact for those citizens that are in those diverse communities.
All right. Do we, do we have any more questions regarding the navigator position because I think we might end up having something else regarding the coordinator? Yes?
Yeah. We missed part of Commissioner Ebinger's question about the hiring process, I think. I was, could we touch on that?
Yeah, it, it really haven't given a lot of thought to the hiring process aside from it just being what we would normally do. I think we would try to reach out to those communities a little bit more. I haven't quite figured out how to do that. That's probably why we need this position, to get into those communities with the job posting.
And again, I, I think we should separate the two even, even in that regard because the navigator position that we're talking about right now, it deals strictly with public health issues.
Yeah.
And I guess we should leave it to the public health people to determine who is best qualified to do that.
Absolutely.
You know, we can have, we can set up interview committees and what have you, but, but to me, it boils down to the people who, who should be hiring in that position or the people who know what they need and who understand what it is. So, you know, from Matt Stanton now, getting into the, getting into the coordinator position, you know, we can have discussions about that on our nine o'clock item here, but, but I think, in terms of that, I think we should leave it up to public health. Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
Can we have some assurance though that the person that will be hired will be from the BIPOC community? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was the intent all.
Just making sure that's very clear. Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Are we going to determine whether this position after one month, two months, six months is good or are we going to say, well, we've got money available, we'll keep the position, you know? I mean, who's going to determine whether it's working or not or, or are we just going to worry about hiring the person and is there, how do we know we needed it or was someone else going to have done it?
I, I think with, with Kathy's position, it's more, going to be more centered on the pandemic and the COVID-19 stuff. And when the COVID-19 and pandemic and all that goes away, we'd have to take another look at, at where we're going to, if we're going to continue that position for one reason or another.
And I, and I just, I want to point, I heard yesterday you say for the first time called this a, it's going to go from a pandemic to a what?
An endemic.
Endemic.
Correct.
Which means, do you want to briefly say that it's going to be like the flu where you're going to always?
Correct. That's the prediction.
That's the prediction.
By the.
Just kind of new information that I heard.
Correct, yeah. So they, they expect it to be endemic, meaning it won't go away ever. It'll just be manageable, won't be like the pandemic now affecting, you know?
So there, you know, I think Commissioner Gross, part of that might be just in terms of this position, just, and again, we were listening to those communities and what they felt their needs are. And, you know, they're, they're becoming a more significant part of, of our county. And I think, I think time will tell in terms of.
How much money are we putting aside or planning to put aside?
I think, I think on this particular one for the, we're looking at $25,000 for the, for the Kathy's position.
About $26,000.
About $26,000 for the variable hour. And that's over a course of a, a year's time right now that we're, and again, these, these positions, the recommendation is that, that we're doing it for one year, subject to review.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of what it is. And then we'll have to determine and get feedback as to how it's working.
Yep. All of these dollars are $20,22 that you have on your agenda on how much the position would be, would, would cost. And I think Commissioner Gross, the, we are looking at, you know, not a regular full-time forever position with this unless that's what we determine one or two years down the road. Right now, we're kind of looking at using ARPA money, but for the coordinator position, I think it's going to take another look at it, you know, one or two years down the road to see, is it really worth the $88,000?
That might have to transfer from ARPA funds to a budgetary.
Exactly. Yes.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross, you know, this is variable hour and we strategically decided variable hour because we can utilize them. Some weeks can be many days that they work and then others can be less. So to reach, you know, the community, it seemed like variable hour made perfect sense that they could do, it can be really strategic and, and meet with the organizations under Rory's leadership. So we feel like that would be, that's just a good use of this position. We don't know what the needs will be.
We're looking at putting on two more people. Have we got space for two more people? I mean, we're always looking for space for our people. Have we got space where we're going to put these people?
We do in the government center, which I think, I think one of them, I think the position that we're talking about that falls under administration would be in the government center. Your position will be within your office area.
Yes, somewhere in our office.
In the home.
I think I have a closet. I'm sure. We'll find a spot, I think.
I think, but the other piece to note is these are more community liaison than maybe we've gone with other positions in the past. And it really is the hope and maybe the exception that this, these people will spend more time meeting people elsewhere other than just an office at the family service center.
All right. Any, any other questions regarding the navigator position? Do we have a motion to move forward?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Our next item is the Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator position for 2022, and I guess we've already talked considerably about that. Darren, do you have more to add?
I do not.
Okay, I do.
Okay.
I, I, I guess, I guess we talked about, significantly about this, this already, but I, you know, this person we talked about, we have, we have a member of the Sheriff's Department who's also part of our ARPA group and, and I think there's, there's some excitement there about the ability to have this person work with law enforcement in areas regarding new Americans and education processes and those types of things. We've seen that in the news of the past, that, that how we can make some communication improvements in that regard. So I think it's good there. I, you know, we also have Brian Metl, our county attorney, who's part of our group. And, and I think he sees some positives that can come out of, of having this position through the county attorney's office and of course through social services and all these other areas that we've talked about. So it's, this is a good opportunity to really make some strides towards improved communications amongst some of our groups of people. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, just in the context I'm seeing this through, I had a conversation with a friend of mine who manages a production plant in, in Fargo that has hired a lot of new Americans. And he told me he's got two Afghanistan families coming from Wisconsin, his employees in his plant. And he has let, let his people know he'll hire as many as, as can come. This is not a thing where we can even see the goalpost. We're going to have a continued need in this area. I know as a, as a former police chief, you've got communities that if they don't feel some degree of representation, they're not going to communicate what they need or anything else to you. You've got to work through that. And there are some good advocates within the community that sounds like they've done a great job expressing a need, but I see this as something we need to do.
Again, this comes as a unanimous recommendation from our committee group to move forward with this hire, so. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Kaylee.
In the hiring process with this, will we try to have some representatives from the BIPOC, New American Refugee Community as a part of that hiring process?
We could certainly look at that, yes. I think that would be a good idea. Yeah. And, you know, we have brought in external people to sit on a interview panel before, so it wouldn't be anything unusual that we would do. I guess finding out who that might be and who would be willing to do that, we'll probably just have to work through that.
Any, any other, okay, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I think in, in terms of the recruitment and interview process, we were really excited to capitalize on the fact that we have three substantial college slash universities within our area and have some world studies students and professors and, and those discussions have really happened about having someone from that community be represented on the interview panel. Certainly it has helped the collaboration in creating these PDQs. Darren has made substantial contacts with area organizations and I think it's really helped to shape what this is, but certainly feel that the more advocacy we can have from other folks, the better in terms of making sure we get a good candidate pool as well.
Why is there such a big difference in the amount of money that we are applying for each position? It just won't have benefits if one doesn't or?
Correct. One's a variable hour, won't have benefits. The other one would be full-time benefit eligible. That's the, and, and what we're looking at right now is the county position would be at a grade 18 and the public health one would probably be at about a grade 17. So there's a little bit of difference there as well.
Any other questions? Yes, Steve.
Mr. Chair, I would note that last night I did receive an email from Khor Farouk. He's the executive director of the Kurdish American Development Organization and he became aware that these two positions were, were going to be on the agenda. He had hoped to be here this morning to, to share his feelings, but was unable due to some other previous, previous issues. And so he just wanted, I can hand out a copy to each of you, but he just wanted to share that after reviewing the agenda for November 16th, 2021, I'm very pleased to see that Clay County Board of Commissioners will be voting in two positions of diversity and equity. Cato is in full support of these positions getting approved so we can hopefully have a more inclusive community. They're in support of Agenda Item 3 and 4. Kurdish people being a new, a majority of the new American population in Clay County, we would of course encourage our group to look to that community for, for hiring and potentially a part of the committee as we talk about who we would have as part of that decision-making process. So I'll provide a copy for each of you.
I did, I did receive an email from Khor and I, but for some reason, the attachment, this letter was not attached because I was going to reply to Khor myself, but anyway.
I got it this morning with the attachment, so.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Kaylee.
I did also receive an email from Steve Lindus from City Council in support of these items as well, so.
All right. Well, I, you know, just a recapping from the ARPA Committee, we, we've talked about this for quite some time and we've had a lot of discussions about it and, and, you know, it took a while to come up with this. Originally, we were looking at the potential of just a one position and we felt that this really should be separated for the needs of pandemic issues and then something that maybe will be beneficial to our communities moving on in a more permanent fashion. So that's why we broke these out separately like this. I think, I'm hoping that it's, it sounds like our, certainly our Kurdish American group is very supportive of this and sees the need, so. And so Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Just to recap too, the cost impact would be about $88,000, a little bit more for 2022. It's our intention that both of these will be advertised within the week. Okay?
Yes.
And then hoping.
The 88, 88 one would be 2022.
2022. And then hoping that by January 1st, both would be in place. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may, make a motion to approve this Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator position.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. And again, this new hire, both these new hires would not impact the current proposed levy for 2022 as these are taken out of separate funds. Okay. All right. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next item as a request to fill vacancy for office supervisor in Sheriff's Department. Sheriff, we've got Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, thanks for having us. We received notice from our office manager, Robin Rummel, that she intends to resign on November 26th. She's accepted a different position to where she's able to work from her residence. Fully support her reasons for leaving after a conversation with her and we're going to certainly miss Robin. She's done a great job for us in moving the department forward, but I'm sure we'll find somebody that will fill those shoes. That being said, we'd like to start advertising for a replacement for Robin. For 2021, it's a slight savings to our budget, only $259, but what we have budgeted for 2022 in her salary compared to hiring a new person would be roughly a $20,000 savings. We may have to look at an interim office manager and we may have to also look at just a slight increase in that interms wage and we would use that with staff that we currently have.
Yes, Commissioner Ebinger.
Sheriff, is there a possibility of an internal candidate in need for backfill on this?
I, I would venture to guess that somebody internal would apply for that position, yeah.
Okay. Would you want to include a backfill on this?
Not at this point because we don't know who that next person is going to be. We don't know if that internal candidate is going to be the person to get that job or not, so.
But if you, if you had that, if you had that within that, if you hired somebody internally, then you wouldn't have to come back to us to replace the next person.
If you don't want me to come back, that's just.
Well, I mean, that's.
I understand what you're saying now and I.
That's typically how we handle those types of things in most of our departments. It makes, it makes it a little easier for you, so.
Anything easier for me is better. So if we could add that as well, that would be good. If it is an internal candidate, then we backfill that internal candidate's position as well.
Just, I want, do want to throw in there since I've worked with Robin. I want, do want to throw in there since I've worked with Robin. It's big, it's, it's a loss. She's a, she's a good troop, but I'm, I'm sure she's doing this for good reasons, so.
Was that a motion?
I, I'd like to make this motion and include a backfill in it. Excuse me.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. Motion carried. All right, Sheriff, you're good to go.
Steve. Thanks, appreciate it.
See you guys, yep. All right, next, Kim.
Good morning.
Room to use Laredo Connect.
Yes, good morning. I'm here to seek approval to move forward with a program called Laredo Connect. This would move the billing responsibility for online subscription service from our office to Fiddler Technologies. It'll save me some time every month, be a little bit more convenient for my customers on the weekend if they run out of money on their subscription service. There would be no additional fee to my customers. The only additional fee would be if they choose to pay with a credit card. There is a credit card fee for them. They do have the option to submit payment to my office directly to avoid that credit card fee if they'd like as well.
All right, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
I think this sounds great that you are increasing accessibility of our, our services. So thank you for researching and finding a solution.
Yes. It will, you know, right now the responsibility lies with me to shut a customer off if they're not paying. So if I shut them off on a Friday and leave for a long holiday weekend, they have no access until I return. With this, they could go online, pay their bill and get it turned right back on immediately.
Awesome.
Commissioner Abinger.
Yes, I had a chance to talk to Kimberly about this and the next two items she's proposing, and it's a win-win. Really is, is thought through well. The only complaint I've ever received from a citizen was that their account had run out over the weekend and at 2:00 in the morning, they wanted to do some work on the internet and get, get documents and they couldn't do it. And this addresses those issues. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Laredo Connect process for the Recorder's Office.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. We'll move into the approval to prohibit customers to charge fees to the Recorder's Office.
Yes, I do have one thing I do need to change on here. I needed to say charge recording fees. So what this would do currently, it's been a longstanding practice in our office to charge recording fees for local customers and then I bill them out at the end of the month. Now with them moving online to pay their Laredo fees, it would be extra work to continue charging these fees. It's not something that's done in any other county. I'm not sure how or why it started here, but I would like to end that process and then they would need to cut a check when they get the document recorded, which is standard practice in all the other counties. And so there is, unless specifically allowed by Minnesota statutes, I have that in there because I have to by statute allow like the Internal Revenue Service, Minnesota Department of Revenue, those type of agencies to charge recording fees. And I still would like to charge vital fees. So that's why I want to change my action to just charge recording fees and add that word recording in there, please.
So is there a, is there a, an audit process that's involved with us to, so that we're assured that we're getting the appropriate fees if, if there's, if there's things that are being done online?
So with the recording fees, those are all invoiced by my office. And so it's me following up to make sure that those payments are being received. So right now I don't know what my course of action would be if somebody didn't pay those fees. So that's why I feel it would be best to just stop that practice altogether.
All right. Commissioner Abinger.
I'd just like to make a motion that we discontinue allowing customers to charge recording fees to the Recorder's Office unless they're among the groups identified in Minnesota statute.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. All right, then we have a request to approve a dock fee schedule change for real estate copies.
Okay, so this one goes to our real estate documents. We have been charging a dollar a page for documents for as long as I've worked here and, and long before that, I'm sure. So currently it's a dollar a page. We max out at $10 a document. The deed for the homeowner is free. And then we have our online searching system, which is $6.95 per search plus a dollar a page, and then a sales tax applies to that. So what I would be proposing is that the last transfer document on record would be no charge for the homeowner. It may or may not be the deed that they're needing for what their purpose is, but if we have to go back farther, it takes a little bit more staff time to do that. So I feel a fee would be appropriate for that. Self-serve document copies made onsite by the customer. We have researchers that will come in and use our terminal and the fee would then stay the same for them. If they're doing everything on their own and they don't need assistance by my staff, it would be a dollar a page per document, max of $10 per document. If it's copies for our staff or property that you own, I would keep that the same. It'd be a dollar a page, max at $10 per document. The big change would be copies of documents made by my staff or properties that you don't own, and that would just be a flat fee of $10 per document. The common example of that would be a real estate attorney or an appraiser needing a copy of a document. They reach out to our office. We will do research when we have time, and then they always want to get that docket immediately. So they will want to pay with their credit card, and it's taking a lot of staff time to take that credit card payment, to make the document into a PDF, to email it out to the customer. So I feel that $10 would, would cover the cost. And then it doesn't make our office compete with our own online research. If they want something immediately, they can go online for $6.95 and look for themselves.
When it comes to fees associated to things like this with our, our taxpayers and their properties, I, I wonder how we designate the difference in, in an argument that they might make that they're already paying it through their tax levy, through the Recorder's Budget for your staffing time and everything like that. So I'm, so I'm curious how, you know, I'm, there's a lot of, a lot of our, the fees that we have throughout the county are really basically additional user fees. And are, so would these be considered additional user fees that you're proposing here?
Right. I mean, typically a homeowner does not need many of the documents that are recorded on their property. They either have that in their abstract or, you know, just need to view covenants or something like that. So it's not like somebody needs to come in and request every document on record for their home. A lot of times they're doing it because they maybe are going to an attorney to do some estate planning, and so they need to see how title is held on their property.
So do you see an increased demand for that type of service?
You know, we're trying to get people to use the online service. We're not professional researchers. We don't have a lot of extra time to do that kind of research. So hope, in hoping of, you know, covering my costs and actually making these copies, right now they're typically waiting about a week turnaround time, if not longer, for an answer. Whereas if they could go online and do the research themselves, they could get an immediate answer.
Any other comments, questions?
A move that we accept the, or approve the copy fee changes proposed in the Agenda Item.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have committee reports, County Minister update. Commissioner Gross, would you like to start this morning?
The only meeting I went to this week was, I guess we were all there at township meeting. I thought it was a little bit different this year. They brought in some more people from outside of the area other than just us county people reporting on our department. So it was a little bit, I was going to say it was a little bit different to hear some of the other people that are, what townships are working on, so. I just say we were all there, so not much to report to here. Okay. That was all I had, just one.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week I, excuse me, attended the Cass Clay Food Partners Meeting. We had a discussion on the, a report from the Fourth Annual Hunger and Health Summit that was held at the end of October in regards to taking action to address food security, insecurity and hunger. We had a report from Mary Larson, who attended the American Public Health Association National Meeting. Substantial reports from all of them, very interesting and certainly it's a nationwide movement to address hunger issues in all of our communities, so I appreciated those reports. And then had updates from the, the rest of the commission members. One of our outgoing commission members is Beth Askegaard. Beth has been a member for several years. The Askegards farm organically in Southern Clay County, mainly in Holy Cross Township, give a report about a test plot that they're doing with NDSU. It's been about two years in regards to developing a perennial flax variety for our northern climate. That was very interesting. We had a gleaning update from Janice. Currently there are two seats at large on that commission. If you have an interest in food issues or, I guess I'm not quite sure the best way to term, term it, in terms of policy or community involvement, certainly reach out to Metro Cog to apply for that. It's, it's been a committee that I've been on for several years and feel that it's very worthwhile. One question that was posed by one of the presenters is, is very thoughtful and it is what does it take for you to buy groceries and how has that position changed in your life? And certainly in my late 30s now, it's been interesting how that question has changed from college 20 cent ramen packets to now. And food challenges don't change as you, you age. It's just how you deal with it, transportation and barriers and payday and all of those things. So just a, an important question to continue to ask all of ourselves as we move forward. That afternoon, I also had a discussion with our administrator and HR administrator on the PDQs for the two positions that we worked on today. I really want to thank Darren for your work in collaborating and continuing to, to make sure that we had those as the best possible situation for applying. I'm really, really, really excited about where these positions could take us going in the future. Also, a thank you to the ARPA Committee for developing that as well, but know that Darren and Steve really did the wordsmithing to make sure we're addressing those needs. The next day I had a meeting with Ryan Erdman from AMC, the Extension Committee. I'm wrapping up my two years as chair on that and then the annual meeting, developing what the agenda will be. We're really going to take a hard look at workforce. That seems to be a common thread of challenge throughout all of the counties statewide and how extension and our partnership with extension can go to help ease those challenges. So we'll talk a little bit about that at the meeting in December. Friday I attended the County Comprehensive Plan Meeting with our Natural Resources Partners in Goals and Objectives and continuing the thank yous, really want to thank Matt. He's just done a substantial amount of work to make sure that we're hearing from as many different voices as possible as we continue to formulate what that plan looks like. Really important perspectives from all of the partners that attended that meeting. So I think we will definitely be incorporating their, their suggestions into what the plan looks like. Yesterday I also attended the Township Officers Meeting that Commissioner Gross reported on. I, I think there are several, we're all part of such great committees and meetings that we talk about major issues year round. And I really do think that the Township Officers Meeting is such a vital meeting for county departments to be part of, to really hear from folks in rural Clay County about what they're seeing and what they're hearing and how we can continue to collaborate. So I appreciate the invitation from Wayne to attend that and know that they're continuing good work and appreciate that as well. Yesterday I attended the site meeting, owner architect construction meeting at our Resource Recovery Campus.
Facility.
Sorry. Can't do that. You know, the, the weather has certainly posed some challenges now in terms of making sure that they're dry enough to do some of the work, but really have done a substantial amount of concrete pouring and rebar is out there and it really is transforming weekly. We did talk about what their four-week schedule will look like. A lot of that is kind of contingent on what the weather looks like since we did get, had such a great fall and now it seems like winter is here now. We talked about some plan revisions in terms of the pricing for the 15th Avenue signage and striping. We did talk about the truck scales approving, going with a Kennedy scale. They're going to work further with Kirk on making sure that they're coordinating on that. There are some structural drawing revisions that they will be working with Burns and Mack to complete. And we seem to, to spend a substantial amount of time talking about electricity and what type of power are we needing out there? We certainly have generator backups at all of our, our facilities and because of the fact that there's offices out there, but we need to have lighting for safety and operation of the scales, we are working with Joe to have a proposal for what those may need. There, as is all the cases, there are always low, medium and high dollar amounts that we need to think about, but really is important from the committee's perspective to make sure that if there's a power outage, that heat and adequate air ventilation is always available. And so I think we'll work further with Joe. Joe is going to get a quote, but I'm a little concerned that, you know, we have talked about possibly using that site for, for additional uses in the future. I know that if you can save some money by maybe up fronting more costs initially, that will save you dollars down the road. I think that's important. So I'm encouraging, and I think Commissioner Campbell is, as well, encouraging us to look at what our future needs may or may not be when we build this. It's always easier to put the wiring in when you're first doing it as opposed to going back and adding some things later. Knowing that since I bought a, bought a house and moved it, I thought it would be so much cheaper, but now you're going back and ripping out walls instead of just building fresh. But, um, so I, I think that certainly that's something that we'll need to, as a board, address in the next couple, couple of weeks, but I don't think we can take an action on it today. We don't have a proposal, but I know that we've reported to this board about possibly using that land for something else, and it, it may be important to put a larger generator in now to save us some dollars in the future.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, was that the last thing?
Uh, yeah, I think.
I was just going to follow up on that if I could. I'm going to maybe do it during Steve's report too, but that, that is really important. I've kind of been, throughout this process there, I've been questioning what our backup system is going to be. We didn't really have much in the original GMP regarding backup power. And so the need to do that, and as Commissioner Mojo said, I think it's really important for us to, as we do this, if we can avoid the need for duplication, moving forward, if we're, and, you know, I think right now, this board, while. know, I think right now, this board, while backup approved an application for a grant for another project within this county, and if that grant is successful, and if that happens to fit within the lands that we currently have, that's always a good thing. But until we get that, know about that, that's, you know, there's not a lot to talk about there. But the idea of, of sizing this to handle what we're anticipating is, is future opportunities is appropriate, and I, so I think we were kind of leaning towards something more in, in preparation for what, if it isn't done now, what might be two or three or four years ago, so that we don't duplicate that process, so. And I think, and I think that's why Joe was here this morning, in case there's any questions regarding that particular part of it. Thanks for being here, Joe. We'll see what, something comes up with Steve's report, if you can hang on a few minutes. Commissioner, so you're done? Commissioner Mojo, were you done? Okay, and Commissioner Ebrin.
Thanks. Last Tuesday, I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Strategic Planning Retreat at the Fargo Country Club. It was six hours work with the results from S.A.G.N.C. on the, basically it was a survey they took of board members. I'm looking for the title of it here. Oh, Healthy Growth Scan for EDC. One of the points that came out of this, both in the survey and in the conversations we had around it, is the need for bringing the Minnesota side more into it, what our place is and what our needs are, and did a lot of discussion on that. I was gratified that it wasn't just Minnesota partners that had something to say about that. There were people on the North Dakota side who also noticed that there needs to be more of a focus on the needs of this, this side of the river, and in needs over in Cass County. So, we had a, a lot of discussions on that, talked about, within the, the study itself, they talked about needing to strengthen relationships with Cass and Clay County as well as Moorhead. Another concern that was discussed was their reliance on public sector funding, and that they need to get more of their private partners to generate funding to operate the EDC. The description they came up with was they needed to regionalize as well. This is to be more inclusive of all the partners involved. We also, as Commissioner Mojo indicated with her AMC conversation, we had a lot of discussion on workforce, and the major goal we've got, particularly with the growth of the, they have the Amazon Center in Fargo, we've got the diversion coming in and require more and more workers, and there was a discussion on new American workforce as well, which is something I think we can look at here as we get some of the motions, the motions we passed today, as we get people on board, bringing some of the new Americans into the workforce. A lot of the Afghan refugees that are coming in fluent in English, have a lot of experience of working with Americans, and I think they'd be a real asset to include in our workforce. On the 10th, I met with Kimberly Savage on the issues that we discussed at County Recorder's Office today. Those were presented, I don't need to go over them, but I do want to point out Kimberly is an extremely attentive employee. She was great at getting the information through to me. I appreciate being kept up to speed on this, and really good on detail, and I think she's a great asset. I appreciate the work she's doing. I was at the Township Officers Fall Meeting yesterday, as we all were. Appreciate some of the comments made by State Senator Kenny Ekin regarding the deadly force issue and the lack of North Dakota's willingness to come over and support our law enforcement in this community and deficit it's left us. I appreciate that he's so attentive on that and is willing to work towards resolving it. It was an interesting meeting. I appreciate getting that perspective. It's something I think I need to hear, being a former Moorhead employee and being familiar with our metro problems, but there's a lot going out in rural Clay County that they, they did a good job of bringing this up to speed on. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee.
I also attended that Cass Clay Food Partners Meeting that Jenny reported on. Two things I wanted to add, the Lawns to Legumes Grant is open again for those looking to convert their lawn into pollinator-friendly land, so that would be doing something like switching your grass to a clover to give more space for those pollinators to, to find food. Another, I just wanted to share a statistic that was shared at that meeting, that there are over 35,000 individuals in Cass Clay that are facing hunger issues, and 37% of those are children, and 12% of them are over 60 years old. So, I just felt that that was a staggering number and something that should be shared. I also attended the Township Officers Meeting, which has been well-reported on. I had a conversation this week as well with Maria Steen from Child Care Aware about some of the needs that she's seeing in our child cares, both center and home-based in the area, and we are going to continue some further discussion on that. And this wasn't a meeting, but lots of emails back and forth. Our law librarian has resigned, and so that position is now advertised. That's a variable hour position, but before he left, he submitted a grant to apply for a little over $8,000 in funds, and that would go for our law library, and that would go towards some of those legal services that we had been doing before with, was it called? Northwest? Yep, Northwest Legal Services. So, that was, those were state funds, and it's looking like 8,250 is supposed to be allocated for each county. Well, I will let you know what happens with that when we hear back more. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On the 11th, I attended the Lakes Country Service Co-op Meeting. We did talk a little bit about the health insurance, and of course, the county's decision to stay with Blue Cross, and I talked a little bit with the board about the reasonings behind that, and, and they did, they did lose a couple of, of other agencies, but they also picked up some from the standpoint of Lakes Country Service Cooperative. So, I think they'll still be strong without us, which I'm thankful for. I think that's still good. They've been a good partner of ours, and, and, you know, I, when I kind of told them that, you know, it came down to dollars, you know, on it, it, they, I think they understood that. Then, on Friday morning, and I, Commissioner Mojo, we also had the Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah, I reported.
Okay, yeah, I guess I might have been. And that one was basically dealing with environmental, natural resource issues regarding the Comprehensive Plan. It was a good meeting. There was a lot of good outside agencies involved with that to deal with a lot of those issues, so I think there was some good communication and good suggestions on, on that Comprehensive Plan. On Monday morning, I also attended the Township Officers Meeting. I don't need to go into any more of that, it's been well-talked about here. Yesterday afternoon, we did have the transfer station construction meeting. We've, Commissioner Mojo's reported on that well. I just want to follow up a little bit too on the, again, with the ARPA Committee's request, and then Commissioner Ebrin, you just mentioned something in terms of, through the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Authority and the need for workforce issues, and, and that's one of the areas that additionally, that I think back to some of our conversations with the state, the state demographer, and the future workforce needs, and, and the predictions are out there, and there's no way that in, within the entire state of Minnesota, that the, that we're going to be able to handle the workforce needs without bringing people from outside the state in. It's clear that that's gonna, that's gonna be the fix, so whether they're immigrants from out of this country or immigrants from other parts of this country, it's still going to be important to have it, and the positions that, the one position especially that we had today can even help in that regard in terms of working with our business community and needs with, with those different groups of folks who are here and, and looking for work, so. That concludes my report. I, I know, Steve, you want to, you have a lot to talk about?
One more that I forgot.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Yesterday, at our Township Committee Meeting, Senator Ekin had alluded to the fact that there had been some changes in terms of qualifying Homestead qualifications. They've changed a little bit to allow some alternative individuals to qualify for that, and just wanted to, for the public listening, comment that those Homestead Special Aeg Veterans with a Disability Applications for Homestead Exclusions are due to the county by December 31st. So, if you think that may apply to you, make sure and call our offices.
And I, I also had the opportunity yesterday, and I, I had an opportunity to speak with Senator Ekin during a break, and I asked him about his familiarity with the opioid settlement issue. That's a lot of money for the state of Minnesota, and, and I talked to him a little bit about that and what it would mean to counties, and that the county's position is that we believe that 80% of those dollars should come directly to counties, and so Senator Ekin certainly was very interested in that, and he was glad to hear that that's AMC's position, and I told him to watch for, for that coming forward, and, and I said, we will share as much with him as we can and, and as we learn this too, moving forward, so. All right, Steve.
I think, Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I met with Darren and Josh Hagam, our Labor Attorney in regards to some ongoing labor negotiations. Also met with, with Darren and Commissioner Mojo's comments about the diversity positions. On that afternoon, I participated in the Board of Adjustments for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. We've had discussions, they've had some challenges of keeping staff also, like all of us have. They're currently staffed for, for 41. They have 37 staff, and of those, 31 are fully trained. The challenge is it takes about six months to, to have one fully ready to go on their own council, and so they've, their, their Board of Authority met and brought forward a number of motions in, in hopes of recruiting and retaining. They're going to be having a 50-cent differential, starting from 5:00 PM till 7:00 AM. They add an additional step to the grid for, for longevity of dispatchers. They're going to be, going to be adding shift supervisors as their, as their staffing, staffing increases to meet, meet those needs, and one of the areas of, of growth opportunities within the organization was the reason that people left. They're looking at some retention dollars for, for those employees that have been with them over the last year. And again, just to highlight that, you know, the, the starting pay there is, is a 2242, goes to 3252, and again, it does not require, it requires a high school diploma, and so they're continuing to face many of the challenges that we've had. Later that afternoon, I also had a meeting with our FM administrators and managers. We talked about redistricting budgets in ARPA, and also that afternoon, just sat in a brief interview with Lori Johnson, Mark Sloan, and the Barnesville Holly Newspaper on redistricting. We had, on the 11th, had MCC JPA pre, oh, yes.
In terms of that interview for redistricting, has anything new come out?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, nothing, nothing new. I don't think anything that's been shared in previous, previous, kind of just gave them a, a process of what, what that looks like and the work that's going into that.
Have you put any, I mean, here we are, it's Thanksgiving next week. Do we have open hearings for the public to submit any responses?
We don't, we don't at this point. From, from the deadline perspective, nothing has to be finalized until early next year, I guess in the March, February, and so I think they're, they're, we're in the process of developing the plan, and we have been having ongoing communications with the city Moorhead, and I think that from that standpoint, it won't be very long until we bring forward a plan for, for the.
And maybe, the reason I'm saying this is it, it takes a lot of time to discern running for public office, and so I get a little concerned the longer this takes for anyone that may want to run. I, I mean, if we're not finalizing, finalizing it until March, the end of March, and then the filing period is the end of May, that doesn't give people a whole lot of time to figure out if that's something they want to do, and, and I really think that the most, the more transparent we can be with this whole process, I think the better. And I, that's maybe just a philosophical belief from local redistricting to federal. I think it's really important the public knows what's going on.
And we'll, we'll work to get an ongoing update to address some of those concerns.
Thanks.
On the 11th, I participated in MCC JPA pre-meeting. We have a meeting this coming Thursday. There's a solar panel garden being addressed at our Planning Commission, and MCC JPA wants to, that's going to be right next to the Southern Embankment. They want to make sure that there will be no impact to the project. We also reviewed some organic appraisal reviews that are going to be up at the meeting this week, farmland management contracts, and a task order related to that, and then we talked about some MCC JPA and appeal process for the policy and procedures of relocation. The 12th, Department Evaluation, number of Department Evaluations this month, we're doing the prep for that. Participated yesterday in the Clay County Association Township Meetings. Again, appreciate their continued invite to us. Also appreciated our, our staff availability. We had 11 different speakers from our departments there, and so appreciate them taking time on other days to be there. Participated in the Resource Recovery Facility that's been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. I think I did mention as we talked, talked with Joe, I think we're, we're looking for Joe to, to explore a little bit more, working with, with the members of, of the engineers to, to find out what the best step forward as far as, as far as the generator. There's a number of different factors that go into that, and so we hope to be able to bring that back in the near future.
Steve, while you're on that, I, one of the, one of the things I think it's important for us to look at is, is if some of that is related to having backup for HVAC and all of that type of stuff, I, I think we, in this process, we should be looking to see if any portion of what we'd be talking about in terms of additional funding to do this could, could qualify under ARPA funds. You know, I, we have, we do have a contingency within this construction project. I'd hate to see one line item blow that out, if, if at all possible, so I, I do believe we should be looking at the potential of, if it qualifies. And I think, Joe, and you've, you guys have done a good job with that in the past in reviewing that, so.
Yesterday afternoon, met with Matt Jacobson in regards to Comprehensive Plan, looking at some, again, dates of certain meetings. Just to touch base on the opioid, opioid settlement that Mr. Chair talked about, again, we're continuing to wait to hear from AMC. They're hoping to have, they're working with negotiations with the Attorney General's Office with the hope that they'll have an agreement by the end of November, which we're then, as we've talked about, we have to provide a, as a board, whether we want to opt in or opt out of that. So, and then just a note, we've, we've worked on a, here recently, an update of our employment page to try to, again, make it more attractive to users, user-friendly, and so if you go onto our webpage, we do have, we do have all the jobs listed. We also highlighted some of the benefits that we've kind of talked about as a, as a, a group, a board. What are some of those highlights that maybe, that maybe we don't get talked about as, as well? What are some of those highlights that maybe, that maybe we don't get talked about as well as of, for our public government? So, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Steve. Brian, do you have anything for us this morning? Colleen, anything additional? Darren?
All right.
We are adjourned.